Good evening. It's my distinct privilege as Mayor and City of Vader to recall this regularly scheduled Vader City Council meeting to order.
Thank you.
We'll do so at 6:03 PM. We will proceed with the roll call, which is customarily performed by our city clerk.
Andy Wilson?
He's present.
Okay. Mark Penison?
Present.
Joe Scheid?
Present.
Kevin Flynn?
Present.
And Justin Olson called in and said he will not be here.
Oh, okay.
Asked to be excused.
All right.
It's still working.
Yep. And Mayor Smith?
Also present. So, we do have a quorum, and so it will be our privilege to, as we customarily do, as Vader City Council begins with the prayer. And my understanding would be that Mr. Penison would do the honors for us this evening.
Our Father, Hallowed Lord, we do thank you for this day, and we thank you for all the goodness of it and the blessings that we receive. We thank you for this opportunity that we have to serve this capacity for our city. And Lord, we count it a privilege, we count it a privilege to come before your throne of grace. We ask for your guidance and leadership as we make these important decisions. We pray that we might do that, which is right, only for our citizens, but your sight as well. So we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Penison. We'll now invite all present to please arise for our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Wilson, would you lead us today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I have a couple of items for the greater good of the community and the council. I'm pleased to note that our city park, McMurphy Park in particular, has been open. It's been open for about a week and a half, if I'm not mistaken. And we're still debating whether or not we want to keep it open if the weather takes a turn for the worst. We do have our park board chairman, and I know you're going to give a report here a little bit later. But I've been considering, seeing if there might be a strategy where we could close the park each evening, but haven't had a chance to chat with members of the park board on that yet. Okay. I wanted to bring to your attention that we have been invited to host a first aid CPR certification class that, if we can get some participants, would begin or be held on March 28th from nine, it's a Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And you would, at the completion of it, receive a certificate affirming your training, and the cost would be $50. So we're hoping that we can entice someone to take advantage of that opportunity. If you don't mind, spread the word. Do we have anybody who signed up for it?
Actually, we do have two. I was thinking that we didn't have any, but we do have two who are definitely going to be there.
Is there a limit to the numbers?
There's a limit of 12.
Is there a minimum number?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And just to mention, the certificate is good for three years. Official Red Cross or Heart Association's certificate.
Yeah, so, and I'm told it is a bargain at that price. With that, then, that concludes the mayor's comments. So if there are no questions on the part of the council, I'd suggest we move forward with the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I'll put a motion on the table. The city approves the agenda as written for 3/12/2015.
Okay. We've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve the city council meeting agenda as written.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. Now, we are required to approve the minutes from our previous city council meeting with the way council acting.
I approve them. I know that we approved the minutes for February 26, 2015, city council meeting.
Okay. Mr. Penison has submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Voucher approval for the first half of March 2015. I trust you had a chance to review the vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of March of 2015 in the amount of $20,214.63.
Okay. Heard the motions submitted by Mr. Scheid to approve the vouchers in the amount so noted. Do we have a second? Second? Okay. By Mr. Penison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Now, we have a report from our park board. We would invite Mr. Crone, if you're ready, to approach the podium. And don't pound it, but pontificate.
Of course, I left all my notes at home.
Oh, no.
Well, that's good. This'll be short.
Our big thing, we had a park board meeting here this week, and we've got our little project at the jail over there, railroad sign and the tracks we're gonna put in. And what we'd like to do is maybe put a help wanted sign on the city sign out here. So we might get some volunteers to get involved in that.
What is it again?
It's a railroad sign. Actually, it was donated to the city in a sense because the Lions Club and the BCCI went together and, well, it was $75, we got the switch sign. It came from Longbill, back to the guy out in, Rhydwood had it, and Larry Bradburg is his name. And he sold it to us, and we donated it to the city, and we wanna put it up in front of the jail, in front of the courtroom side of the jail. And we've got some tracks and a switch, and actually, we've got a couple of different lights that were given to us too, that we can put in display up there, just in front.
That's where those railroad ties came from.
Yeah. You know where the bench was in there? Well, that was, the kids broke that, or it was broke anyhow. So we moved it around back, and we're gonna put it right in there. We'll put one post up about 10 foot tall, and then we'll mount two signs. One's a stop sign, it's horizontal, and then the other one, just a red flashing light that came off on the crossing somewhere years back, or both of them did. And if we could just get a sign up and we could set a date, we're not looking at too many hours to do that.
I'm a little confused. I had not heard of this project until just now, and I think it would be a remiss on the part of the park board if you didn't get the city council's approval for such project.
Well, that's our plan.
But to proceed with the plan, the park board, the city council would need to approve such a project. That would seem to me to be step one, since as mayor, my task would be to carry out the administrative wishes of the city council. So maybe you want to, could we just make that a motion or something? It would be remiss of me to engage in it, something the council would want to do.
Do you have a rendering of all?
Huh?
Have you done a rendering?
No, I don't. I gotta get that, and I should've done that here in the last two days, but I was sidetracked. I've got a couple of pictures of the sign, and of course, let me look and see if I've got it. I don't think I do. I took pictures of it before we got it. The fellow that we got it from, Larry Bradburg, lived out and moved from Rhydwood to Wharton. So he sold us the signs and the track and the switch assembly.
I'll tell ya, I'd be for it. I'd just like to see it.
Being it did come from Longbill, we thought that was something that would go good for historic in front of the jail there.
Not at all. I don't have any to say.
Yeah, we're already talking a spot of eight foot, like.
So it'll be donated to the city?
Yeah, it's already been donated, and it's over in the shop now.
So there's no cost involved?
No, there's no cost at all, just a little labor. Actually, we're looking, as far as labor goes, the track, the ties we have, we're gonna have to cut in half because they're a little bit too big for our space there. If we cut them in half, it's a narrow gauge.
So this could be a narrow gauge railroad.
Well, it's a narrow gauge, yeah.
True.
And, yeah, if we could just maybe get a sign put up, if this is all okay, we could get a sign put up, and we could set a date where we get some volunteers to help. Like I said, it shouldn't only be but a few hours, a couple, two or three hours maybe to do that. And, can you, with that, some of our future projects for this year here is gonna be, we're gonna try and get the fence put in on the north side of Wharton Park up here. And that's a 125-foot deep fence, maybe by six foot high with a cedar. And we wanna put in, we got our barbecue stands, glass, lake pole. And we'd like to get those put in now that the weather's turning nice.
Those are for McMurphy Park, aren't they?
Well, there's three for McMurphy and two for Wharton up here, and we'll put one up here, and the second one, we're not gonna put in because we don't know what's gonna happen to the property next door. If it's convenient, we can put one on that side, too. Give us two up here and three down there. Probably located up, down at McMurphy Park, one by the oak tree, and then two down by the river at each of their gathering places down there. And I guess that's all I've got right now.
Well, do we wanna do a motion on that?
I think we'll need to.
All right, well, I'll put a motion. I would like to see a rendering of what your plan is. I am all for it, but I'll put a motion together that I would like to have it approved for the tracks and the railroad sign, but if it is approved, I'd still like to see your rendering.
Oh, I can do that.
Okay.
I had that, all this stuff.
I know you did.
Okay. All right. We've heard a motion submitted for the council to approve tentatively the project proposed by the park board involving the signage and the rail tracks in front of the city jail. I capture the essence of your motion.
Yep.
Okay. Contingent upon receipt of some.
Subrender.
Subrendering of it. Okay. Do we have a second for that? Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Is there any additional commentary, questions regarding the project? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Very good. Thank you.
And one little thing here. Lois Wilson brought up the fact that she had her seven-year-old grandson over a couple weeks ago playing basketball at the court there, and whenever he threw the ball, most of the time it went over the hill into the alley down there. Well, I have got some leftover fencing, and we're gonna put that across the backs without a stopping, hopefully going down the alley. That's a plan for Jason and I on Monday, so.
The council, yes.
Is that gonna be a 20-foot fence?
Well, probably 24, once you get it over it.
Okay.
And that's gonna take us an hour maybe to do that, so.
Does the council approve of that project? The council has to approve the projects submitted by the park board. It's just how our portents states.
No, I was just wondering how tall of a fence.
Maybe four foot. It's three- or four-foot fence. It's just enough to keep the ball from rolling downhill.
Where is that fence gonna be placed? It's gonna be placed immediately behind the.
Behind the, well, you know where the wooden fence is in the corner of the park there? It's just right behind it. And it's, then that's about 15 or 20 feet from the basketball hoop. So when I do overshoot it, it'll hit that net and stop.
Won't create a mowing problem for.
No, no. Right now, where we're gonna put it, I don't know if we can get it there with a mower. It hasn't been mowed back there, so. It's right on the edge of the bluff there.
You have a question?
I'm wondering if we know exactly where the property line is. I'm concerned about the fence, and then somebody coming later and saying, "That's on my property."
Well, the only thing we have to go by is, was getting into the records, is the fence line there on Mr. Allison's house.
We might need to get into the records, just because we.
Yeah, given the sensitivity, now you're talking now about the north fence.
Yeah, the new cedar fence.
Oh, I can, rest assured.
Because actually, as I understand it, it's, his fence line is on our property.
It actually is. We contested its location, but then deferred in an effort to be a good neighbor and to avoid a potential lawsuit, which he threatened to impose upon the community.
So it's gonna be placed on this side of the.
Yeah. Yeah.
So which one are you talking about, though? I'm confused because you're saying.
The wooden fence is gonna be on the north side.
By Mr. Allison's property.
This is a wire fence.
And this little wire fence we're gonna put is on the west side, behind the basketball.
Before it goes down the hill.
Yeah, that's where it goes down the hill. And save from having to run down.
I don't think that the westbound fence is gonna be a problem.
I thought the road was a proper line.
Yeah. I don't think anybody's gonna contest that.
Yeah, and that's just gonna be with some T-posts in there, and it could be removed at any time, if we ever continue with future plans of putting a fence on that side of the property, too, so.
Well, then, I don't know that we.
I'm making a motion that we approve the placement of the fence, where it's, I don't know, okay yet.
Okay. We've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Penison to approve the fence along the westerly edge of the basketball facility. I believe the council's already approved the fence. We haven't on a previous meeting. Okay. Then maybe, did you want to add the fence on the north property as part of your motion?
Do we have a cost for that, or, I mean, we haven't done any of the research on that yet.
I thought that we had.
I have, well.
Maybe not.
We did here a year ago, and I'm sure the costs have changed, but I was up at Home Depot last week, and they have eight-foot sections of the fence pre-made, and they're $70 a section. And we're looking at 16 sections, is it, I think?
And how much were they a section?
They were $70 a section. And then we have to furnish the posts, and the posts are, the treated posts are, they were $9 in Home Depot.
So we're looking at $1,500 or something, maybe more.
I'm thinking if we go, I don't have the figures in front of me now, but we went to the mill in, on Alaska, and we got our best price from them. And unfortunately, I don't have a paper with me. But we would probably have to get an update on that because that was last summer.
I think we ought to approve the motion that Mark presented just on the wire fencing and the wood fencing. We have to get some details on that.
Yeah, and that's not gonna happen right away anyhow.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Well, we have a motion, as it's previously been submitted, but then you modified it to include it.
Oh, we modified it, not included.
Okay.
You're the only one who can withdraw it and modify it, so.
I withdraw the wood fence part.
Okay, so we're still responding to the motion to approve the temporary bowl retaining fence on the west side of the basketball.
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by Mr. Flynn. Any additional discussion? If you're hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion is carried. Thank you for that report.
Okay, thank you.
Now we're at the point in our meeting where we have a public comment.
I don't have anybody signed up for public comment.
Okay. Very good. Then we'll proceed forward with city business. First item, I'm pleased to introduce its presentation on Abuse Awareness Day, in a month, actually, and we're pleased to have with us Ruth Creer, one of our EMTs who serves our community, has done that for 12 years, I believe, something like that. And we're grateful to have her here. She's asked if she could take five minutes or so to present some information about that activity. So would you mind taking the podium? Don't take it, just.
I'm gonna put my card up. Good evening, everybody. My name's Ruth Creer, and I wanna talk to you a little bit about child abuse awareness. Before I start, I wanna read something real quick. Did you know that by the time I finish reading this, 15 children would have been abused? Fifteen. In the next five minutes, 30 more. Within the next hour, 360 more kids. And by the end of each day, 8,000 children are abused and suffer some kind of abuse at the hands, usually by somebody they know. Out of those 8,000, five kids will die each day. Five. That could be your grandchild, your child, your neighbor. So just something to think about there, that every day it happens. Right now, in the foster care system, in Lewis County alone, we have 144 foster kids. A lot of those are from abused and neglected homes. 144 kids. That's a lot for a little Lewis County. And on top of that, we have nine people right now in the Lewis County jail waiting to go to trial for some kind of abuse on a child, from rape to murder. It's time that we take a stand against abuse. Vader, excuse me, experienced a loss a few months back to a child on supposedly abuse. That child belongs to us, in my eyes. He's our child. I feel not only do we need to stand up for him, we need to stand up for all the kids. So I come to you today to ask that you make a pro, whoa, excuse me. If I can pronounce this word right. Proclamation, proclamation? That you recognize the month of April as Child Abuse Awareness Month in Vader. It is Awareness Month, the whole month of April for the United States. But I feel that we owe it to our children to take a stand. I'm asking that we be able to put blue ribbons through our town and show Lewis County that we care, not only about our kids in this town, but the kids all over. I started this over a year ago when my granddaughter was abused. She was four months old. She was a healthy, vibrant little girl. That little girl can no longer see, she can't hear, and she has severe brain damage at the hands of the mother's boyfriend. He got three years. That's not enough. She got a lifetime. They are telling us that she might not make it till she's 12 years old, but in three years, he'll be out walking the streets. I'm asking each and every one of you to take a stand and fight for our children. That old saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." It does, and it takes all of us to protect them. So please, help me, help them. We have a abuse walk that we did last year, that we started last year, and we will be doing it again. We'll be in Olympia on the 11th and on the 13th. We walk for our children. We walk for your grandchildren, your children. Please join us and support our kids. It costs $80 billion on child abuse. $80 billion. That's your taxpaying money. You know, I ask that if you feel like somebody is being abused, even if it turns out to be nothing, to make that call, you could save that child's life. You could save my granddaughter, your grandson, your nephew, stranger. It's up to all of us. So, that's what I got. Oh, sorry, one more thing, please. I also would like to know if the council would be willing to dedicate or donate a small spot at one of the parks that we can put a flower bed in honor of Jasper.
Now, you mentioned blue ribbons. Did you want to expand on that just briefly?
Yes, the blue ribbon, excuse me, the blue ribbons represent abuse. They're just little ribbons like this. We'd like to tie them up around town, let's show Lewis County that we care. I know Callis County does pinwheels, blue pinwheels, and they will be doing that next month, but the whole month of April is considered Child Abuse Awareness Month. So I would, I'd be happy to donate the ribbon. We are okay to tie them around town. I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Well, did that stimulate any commentary from the council of support? If the council were willing, I'd certainly assist with the proclamation. The council.
Absolutely.
Read a motion, please.
Well, I think that it might be helpful.
Okay, I put forward a motion that we make a proclamation for the month of, this month?
April.
For April. For April. For Child Abuse Month. And also to allow for their ribbons to be put up. I don't know if they wanna reveal the spot in the park at this point, or.
That might be something that we could propose to the park board and bring up at one of their meetings.
Yeah, I'm willing to go up to one of their meetings.
Okay. I'll be right there.
I might communicate with Steve more than.
Yeah, that's what we.
There's several places down on Parket.
Okay. Well, you've heard the motion.
I'll second it.
Well, let me, I'm over the motion first. I know our city clerk.
I just needed a clarification. Is it April of 2015, or is it every April, it's Child Abuse Awareness Month?
My understanding was it's April, the month of April.
Every, no, every year, the month of April. Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood.
So you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Penison to approve of a proclamation for presentation to council in April, and to allow for the placement of ribbons, of blue ribbons, as you've indicated. And we would submit your proposal for a. And we would submit your proposal for a small planter memorial of Jasper, to be considered by the park board for eventual action by the council. So we had a second for that by Mr. Wilson. Ojo Shai has seconded it.
No, I didn't, but I will second it.
You'll get there.
How's Kevin?
I'll third it.
Oh, well, if you already had a second, we'll go with Mr. Flynn. Thank you for the second and third. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously, and let's be in touch.
Okay. Oh, real quick, Dan, would you mind put one of these up somewhere here?
Yeah, that's no problem. Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, well done. Okay, now, let's proceed to item two of a number of sub-items. A, hearing of the examiner. You're, I was not at our last council meeting, but you're aware that we have advertised and did receive two PFRs, a request for qualifications and reports, and I've reviewed those, the two applicants for that position, and have done some research as to which of the two that I would prefer to submit for your council consideration. And I would submit for your consideration of the application submitted by an attorney in the city of Chehalis, by the name Bart Ricks. And he's a partner with Peritod Firm, I forget the second name.
Peritod's the third name. There's three names.
Yeah, there's three names in it. But the selection was based on experience, but first and foremost, that he was the less expensive of the two. And so I don't know that you've had a chance to review. Did we make a copy of it for the?
No. A copy of?
The, his application.
No.
Okay, then, then I would suggest that you accept my statement at face value, which.
Can I ask a question?
Please, yes.
Are we, is he applying as the firm or as an individual?
As a firm.
As the firm.
He's the managing partner. He submits.
What I'm getting at is if he were not available, then it'd be somebody else available.
Yes.
Okay.
His firm would, and I mean, it's, from my perspective, it's probably not fair for you to engage in a vote without seeing, but that's okay. We just, I informed him yesterday that he, his firm had been selected, so we're just operating on the fly here.
Well, based on everything that we've been waiting on, I would say we ought to move ahead and get them on board and get started.
I'd be grateful for that, yes.
My thought is that council could move to allow you to coordinate the contract with them, and then at the next council meeting, it would bring the contract before council, and they could choose whether they accept it or not. What a possibility.
Thank you for that. It's a possibility. Both firms were good. As I, you study them, they're very qualified, and, but the Bart Ricks proposal is, almost half as effective, and they are including some steps that I think might provide us a more specialized and individualized approach, because it is a contract that would be on an as-needed, per job basis. So I would embrace Mr. Flynn's proposal to allow me to move forward with that, and as our city clerk mentioned, we could work with him to formulate a contract, and in the meantime, we could get you a copy of their proposal and have it ready for action at our next council meeting.
I like the sounds of that.
Yeah, I think we should wait for a proposal.
Yep, okay. Then, I don't know that we need a motion, an official motion, because we wouldn't approve it officially until the next council meeting.
I would like to add something. One of the houses that burned down recently was cleaned up last week or over the last two weeks. And just to let you know that it's not an arm and a leg to clean these places up. The bill for cleaning that place up was $1,600.
Yeah. Is that right?
And that was, and that's a cleaned up mess. So for these other places to be stroking it the way it's been going on, I would love to see this hearing examiner get on board, so we can force the people to clean up the messes.
You know, I drive around town three or four times a day.
I don't know that.
Up there in F Street.
Yep.
The county owns those places up there. They're just getting worse and worse and worse. It's winter, some of these homeless people haven't found them, otherwise.
I think they have. I think they have found them.
Yeah, well, the county doesn't own those properties.
Some of them.
Some of them they do.
There's two of them, yeah.
County owns them.
Several, yeah. They've sold a couple of them, but they still own a couple of them as well.
Okay, thank you for that.
The ones they own are all on the east side of the road.
Right. Ah, okay. Well, it's good to know whoever owns them, if we can get our ducks in a row, and our hearing examiner's the last big duck, we ought to be able to go after them. So unless there's comments to the contrary, we will get those documents to you, and hopefully we can get, work out some contractual relationship with them.
Excellent.
At least for our next council meeting. We waited this long, two more weeks, and we'll be good to go. All right. Capital facilities plan update. Planners are still plugging away with it. It's one of their top priority items, and they know that we met with them and spoke with them last week, that the capital facilities plan update is critical, and that there's time elements involved with property acquisition for the parks. Mr. Flynn, I did emphasize to them the sensitivity of the timing because of the situation that we're facing with that property. So correct me if I'm wrong, our city clerk who was present at that meeting too, that they did embrace the gravity of that situation.
Okay.
But I can't guess.
They've made some headway, but they're still.
So that's my update. You'll be getting updates every council meeting. Okay, planning committee meeting. Gary Cooper, representative of the company that's providing the planning services, came down, and we had a planning meeting. I'm not sure where, but we've had two resignations from that committee, Ross McDowell, his property's for sale, and he has already taken employment in Thurston County, I believe, so he had no option, felt badly about it. Then Jim Black submitted a resignation just before Friday's meeting, but we had it for him, so we were fine. It went very well. And they were, received some training, and introductions were made, and so they're going to be working closely with the planning committee and the various issues relating to the ordinances that we have. And they're, one of the first steps is they're going to engage in a research on permit fees that relate to our building ordinances and other permits in the city. Okay, any questions on that? And they're also waiting for the hearing examiner. Shoreline Management Program Public Hearing. Probably aware that Grant Osborne will be presenting, will be overseeing the public hearing that will take place on March 26th in our next city council meeting. Copies are for review of that Shoreline Management Report are available. They're available online. Members of the public would like to get copies of that, they are available at City Hall. Okay.
Will that public hearing be starting early before the meeting?
No, it'll be in the middle of the meeting.
Oh, one of those public hearings? Okay.
If I understand correctly, after the public hearing, there's an option for council to go ahead and approve the Shoreline Management Program that's been provided in these three folders, and I just wanted to clarify, apologize, I gave you all the first folder, but then I didn't give you the other two. So you got the other two, all three of them together make the Shoreline Master Program, so, or Shoreline Management Plan, this is the master program, so I believe Mr. Hinton will be looking for possibly an approval of, and that to finalize this, they've gone through all the other steps, Department of Commerce, and everybody who's needed to review it, and we've had other public hearings on it last year, and this is the final public hearing, so, so that you understand where we are at, and we're encouraging members of the public to read it and participate and give comments.
There are no, any observations, comments? If not, I proceed to the wastewater topics. Sub item I, the outfall pipe location for our sewer effluent.
You skipped employee salary schedule.
Oh, sorry, yes, okay, that's good. Let's jump back up to item B, employee salary schedule. I believe at the last council meeting, you suggested that we prepare for you a draft, and that's all this is, is a draft of a pay.
This isn't even a draft.
It's not even a draft.
This is just more information.
Okay, thank you.
Haven't got to the draft part yet, because the council needs to make some decisions on.
It always looks official, but.
It started out as a draft.
Yeah, and this represents considerable research on part of our city clerk, and we're grateful to you for that, in an effort to get something for you to look at. And we went over it prior to the outset of the council meeting, and I think I captured the essence of it, but I have not had any official input on it, so it's as fresh for me as it is for you. So Jill, would you mind explaining?
Sure. So the chart that you see at the top that says job titles are first, and then the base salary, and then the different pay grades that you see, the, the way that I said it, I looked up several different ways to do a salary schedule, and the majority of them said that a 15% difference between each pay scale, between the jump in each pay scale, the next level, is typical. So what I did was I took the AWC salary benefit information that I gave you last meeting, and took the averages, figured out what the monthly average would be for a 40-hour-a-week employee, and that average is the middle, which is pay grade C. That's the average. The, you'll see that the base salary is, it goes down two levels, so that would be 30% less than the average, and the salary cap for those is 30% more than the average. And this is just a shot in the dark, you guys. There's several different ways we can do it, but this is just to give you some kind of an idea what we're looking at.
I have a question that popped in my head.
Sure.
What is the chronology of those 15% raises? Is that every two years, every three?
That's what council has to decide. That's why I couldn't put one together, because this is all policy decisions that council needs to talk about and decide. And as you read further down, you'll see that under job classifications, there's different ways that you can do the pay raises for different types of jobs, different classifications. There's, in our personnel policy, there's already a cost of living increase, and so I put the wording in there to show you what it says, and the cost, a cost of living increase, if it were to be applied, would be applied across the board. Every, the chart would be increased by the cost of living, everything, everyone's getting paid at the current time would be an increase, the way it's written now.
Base salary, pay grade A, is that the current, what is being paid, or what should be paid?
If we use the AWC salary information that I gave you, if we only use that information as our base criteria, this is what it would look like. If we did the 15% each, you know, level.
So that's what the going rate?
From, the best I can tell, out of the best information that I have right now, that that's the best I can tell. Currently, the city clerk, the deputy clerk, and the public works labor are both in, are all three in pay grade A, in that range, and the waste treatment operators in pay grade B right now, based on what they currently get paid.
I think the council should take and look this over before any decision.
We're not ready for a decision, that's why there's, there's also the salary. Yeah, if you can, if you read the whole thing, you'll see that there's options of different ways to apply the salaries. How do you decide when they go from one salary to another? Is it, you have to decide you want to do it by how much time they've worked, you want to do it based on their, on their employee evaluations for the year, there, you know, there's, and there are a million different ways you can do it. The council that I received, they said you just got to be, make sure that whatever you decide as the process, it has to be the same for everybody. Everybody in that pay classification, that job classification. So like the people that work in administration, they should all typically have the same type of pay scale. But their, but their pay scale can be completely different from like the public works people who have a totally different type of job, and they, it might make more sense to give them pay raises based on a different type of criteria. You can do it all the same, or you could do it all, you can do different classifications. It's up to you as council members to set the policy, but we're just encouraged to make sure that whatever we decide we want to do, that it's the same, that everybody has the same opportunity, and that we check with our attorney and get their okay on anything that we pass. Make sure that we're not, you know, crossing over any HR laws that we're not supposed to be crossing, so.
Okay. So this is for you to read, it is not to be voted on, because these are just hypothetical figures and it's a strategy to implement a pay scale. So we, this is, yeah, homework for.
More reading.
Now, let's proceed with item F, wastewater topics, and sub-line item I, the outfall pipe location for sewer effluent pipe, as part of our upgrade to our waste treatment system. I'm prepared to report that we're, the city has not made any final decisions as to where an effluent pipe to the Cowlets River may go. There are some rumors afoot that I've heard that the decision's been made, but that's not based in any reality. We have had outreach efforts with a number of the residents there and an effort to communicate and to sit down with them. And not had a great deal of success with that. There's a lot of opposition amongst the residents. We have three present with us this evening, so we're grateful to you for being here. But hopefully, there isn't any sense that the city of Vator has made a decision on where that pipe outflow is going to be. But, so, we're still exploring options. And we don't have anything other than that to report at the moment.
Well, I made my point, I would have talked about that. The Department of Ecology or whatever are not using common sense. There's nothing wrong, as long as Winlock can do it and other cities can do it, dump it into the Olaqua, why can't the city of Vator? This is my feeling, if they're not using common sense.
We could do it too if we built a $10 million plan.
Exactly. Yeah, that's the reason why. That's the, although probably it'd be $10 million, but it would be about $2 million more. We'd have to install that special filtration system. And so the Department of Ecology is simply trying to be sensitive to the huge financial burden that it would place on the residents of this community. So you understand that, suspect. So we're between a rock and a place.
Are we being entertained in what's going on here?
Last meeting we were.
It's calming.
It's good. So.
I think it should be restated that this pipe is not processed, it is treated.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's, I mean, emotions would predictably would run high with anybody. If we lived in that section, I have no doubt that we would be sharing the same sentiments. But I don't want to put words in mouths of our neighbors in a chandal. But every city in Lewis County, their waste treatment ends up in a waterway. It's, it's just a matter of proximity. And it's not unusual. And what will come out of that pipe would actually be cleaner than what is coming out of the pipes currently that go in the Olaqua, which flows into the Cowlets. So, but that's the reality of it.
Have any of the engineers or technicians started to review the, the different proposed shoreline areas yet?
Yes. But well, they put together a proposal. But because we haven't identified a location, they're putting together a proposal that is different than the other ones that have been submitted. And that's what, hopefully by our next council meeting, we may have some, something to report.
Are they taking into consideration any of this? I talked about phasing things in instead of doing it all at once.
Oh, yes.
Because I talked to our public works person, and he was telling me how things are progressing down there, and we're getting better and better, it seems, our results. And he talked about those other aerators, the possibilities. And if we were to get those, they could really make a big change as to what our effluent is and what the requirements would be on what we're depositing. So I'd like to see us phase things in and keep track of the improvements instead of saying, well, you got to have this. And I'd like to do it slowly instead of forcing it down our throats all at once.
Well, then, did we provide a copy of the latest communication we got from Department of Ecology? I think it was on Thursday of last week from the council. Regarding one aspect of that observation.
I don't recall if we did. Do you guys remember getting one?
Nope.
But then it hasn't happened yet.
Something about a grant, that was from the county though.
I didn't see any Department of Ecology.
Not that one. Okay, then let's make sure. I don't think it came just to regular.
No.
So it addresses in part that.
Okay.
So before we address it in greater detail, let's make sure you've got a copy of it.
Okay.
That's Mr. Wilson's.
I still say that aeration is one of our big problems. We should have two aerators minimum, working there constantly. We only have one.
Nev's working on that. There's, that's in process, but we're, hasn't been settled yet.
Yeah, it won't solve our, our effluent problem.
And this, this is why our readings don't look good in Department of Ecology. Because the effluent going over in the Olaqua, because we're not properly in the aeration system. To me, it's a common part of a sewer, look at the long view.
Well, that's probably why the ultimate solution is going to be an upgrade of the aeration system and modernize it and make it more effective.
Correct.
And that is the least expensive of the options that have been made available to us. So you're right. But just adding a second aerator is not going to bring us in compliance.
That wouldn't fix the metals issues and things like that.
No. The mercury and ammonia and other such things.
Do we keep track of what the metals measurements are prior to our wastewater treatment plant?
I don't know.
There are a couple of metals that are new that Ecology is imposing on the state of Washington. And they themselves have finalized it. They're kind of projecting ahead and anticipating that there'll be higher standards on these metals.
Right, I'm aware of that.
I don't think that there would be records for those particular metals. If that's, you know, a layman's response to it.
I understand what you're saying. It's just if we're being required to meet a metal content going into the Olaqua, what's already in the Olaqua? And is, is the requirement that we have to meet better than what's there? And our job is not to clean up the stream. Our job is to nullify what we're putting in. And I read some reports that the requirements that Ecology is putting on cities, right now, the requirement they're putting on us is more stringent than they're putting on anybody. And that's, I would like to, that's why I like to phase things in slowly.
Yeah, I have not, I've heard that, but.
That was published in the, one of the newspapers, not the Town Prior. It was one of the, I think it was the one from Longview I read that in.
Well, I think that from my perspective, being a layman, as much as we all are, is that we are being approved for as least expensive a solution as is out there. And that if Ecology had their way with it, we would be installing a plant no different than Toledo, which is a $9 million facility that would have a cleaner outflow than what we're going to generate with the upgrades in our aerators. So I think that we can't claim that they're holding us to much of a higher standard. They're actually allowing us to have a lower standard, and that standard has been lowered because we can have an exit in the Cowlets and not the Olaqua. Obviously, the environmental agencies are grateful for this option because they're, is concerned to a certain extent with how to clean up the Olaqua, which is a recovery stream. The state would prefer that it be an additional salmon habitat, which it used to be, but hasn't been probably for the last 30 years. So it's all part of the give and take of our environmental sensitivity. And so, going with that, but I think we've seen and heard all of that over the course of the last two years. We've struggled and wrestled with what options we have out there that are within our means of affordability. Okay, but all right, if there aren't any other questions, given the time of it, I'd go with a double I. Finished work around one of the private side sewer replacements. The company that completed about half of the side sewers will be back next week and will be touching up all of the trenches and other sites that they've worked on in the city. So we should see them in action. We'll have a report when they're completed. And last, last item, three, the council to consider an offer for surplus police vehicle. You may be aware that we were recontacted by a neighboring community with an offer for the charger. And their offer was $8,500. And so I'm prepared to submit that for council consideration. You would probably ask what the Kelly Blue Book is on that vehicle, which has about 47,000 miles on it. Would be from $11,000 to $13,000, would be the Blue Book value.
That's retail, not wholesale? What's the possibility of selling it other than the, to Toledo? We haven't had any offers on it, have we?
We haven't advertised, we haven't gone out for bids, we haven't done anything on it yet.
How long has their offer sat there?
Until they get another car. Originally, they had told me at the end of the year that they couldn't wait any longer, they needed a vehicle, so. But then John Brockmiller came over a couple of weeks ago and said, any word on that car?
Good, tell him $9,500, counter him, see what he says.
Counselor, we're compliant.
Pardon me?
If the council were to dictate that, we could certainly engage in that.
Why not try to negotiate?
We're, we're fine with that.
Well, we haven't even attempted to try to sell it publicly yet.
No, but it, it's a police car, so we could only sell it to a police agency the way it is. I think that's where we're going to get the most money, because otherwise, we're going to have to take all the police equipment off and then try to sell it as an old police car. And I think we'll get, it's still usable and in good shape and still desirable vehicle for police departments. They're still using that same vehicle.
Well, there's an awful lot of vehicles today. I need another pickup. I was just about going, I've only got 300,000 miles on it.
We'll sell them your pickup and you can have the car.
It's my baby. I bought it in '91. And I've been looking for another pickup, used pickup. And there's a lot of used pickups that are more reasonable today than I thought they would be. And so if we have a decent price, I'd say sell it instead of us holding it up and washing it down and letting it deteriorate every day by the day.
I think we ought to get rid of it, but I'd like to see us try and negotiate.
Okay.
Well, if they're asking for a $3,000, I mean, $8,500 is $3,000 with a Blue Book, so. That's what you're saying, so.
Yeah, that's why I'd like to see us negotiate a little bit.
We can give them a deal, but that's a little bit much.
Okay, we got two for negotiating. You say just sell it, get rid of it, negotiate?
Yeah, I think negotiation's a good, they're our neighbors.
That's good business.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, whatever you say. Okay, then negotiate, we will, and we will, we'll keep you advised.
And gee whiz, it'd be next door, we can always go say hi to our ex-police car.
How do you want us to negotiate? I mean.
Lower hi, you want us to number?
I mean, where do you want us to?
Whatever you can get.
You want it to be up to the mayor, however he can negotiate the best price. You know, he, okay?
I know, I know.
Okay.
Let him do his best job.
Okay.
Go for it.
Arab goat trader, that's for sure.
Auctioneer?
Nope, not an auctioneer either. It might be pretty easy, but.
Can you motion on that? Or just approve it?
I think just.
It might be smart.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a thin surplus, we just need, you know, if you guys want to go a specific route in selling it, that should probably be a motion.
Yeah, probably true. And I'd include, say, $9,500, I heard you mention that.
Yep.
A minimum, so we might try about.
I would, I wouldn't even set a number as a minimum. I'd say negotiate your, give it your best shot. You know, keep them interested and see if we can suck them into another $1,000, $1,500 bucks. They want to get it below Blue Book. We'd like to get better than Blue Book.
It seems normal.
Or closer to Blue Book.
Right. Find a wholesale value, and I'll bet you if wholesale value is $8,500 bucks.
We're playing a whole shoot.
All right, duly noted. So can we make that the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion that we give the mayor the authority to negotiate a contract with Toledo on the sale of the car and to pull the best price he can out of it.
Okay, heard that motion authorizing me to engage in some horse trading and try and get the best price we can out of it with the Blue Book value as the basis. So with that, do we have a second for that motion?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Wilson?
I want to get rid of it.
Yeah?
Clean up our garage.
Get space for it. All right, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. I don't see, yes.
I have a few comments. I'd like to see the streetlights at A Street by Doug McInnes's house fixed. And also the streetlight at the old fire hall fixed. Instead of going off and on 30 seconds, off and on, off and on. And those two lights, they're just two, but they don't go surfing around town at nighttime. Those two, I'd like to see them fixed, they've been going on this way for five years. Then.
Did you make note of that?
Yep.
Then what happened to the tower that was, they was going to build or something down here?
It's, it's been placed on bank burner, as far as I know. They've not recontacted the city. There were only two options. That was with the load crane and then at the absolute German site. So the city has had nothing to do with that.
My last comment is, I don't want to tell him because it's not my job, but could you get the employee to go down and take care of the old park road with the brush hogs? He, I mean, it's nothing old BlackBerry lines. It's getting so, it's scratching my beautiful little pickup.
Mine, ooh, can't have that.
And I don't want to hurt it anymore.
Okay.
Okay, then, Mr. Wilson, yes, we'll duly note that. And with that, we'll declare this meeting adjourned at.
I beat you last.
7:12.
I've been watching.
Hey, Mr. Moore.
I've been sweating bullets.